I would like to call the March meeting of the Kansas Board of Education to order. Welcome, everybody. We're glad to have you with us this morning, particularly Professor Mary Skaggs and students from Baker University. We have 12 or 13 or so here with us, so we have to be on our best behavior this morning, so we'll make a good impression on our students. Thank you. I would like to note that Sally Cobble is not present this morning. She should be with us this afternoon. The mission of the Kansas Board of Education is to prepare students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. I would now invite you to join me in a moment of silence before we begin our formal meeting. Thank you. We will stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we approve our agenda, I would like to note that we will be adding a third executive session for the purpose of attorney consultation. And also to remind board members to look in their folder, we do not have a change on the consent agenda, but there are $3 amounts on Item 15I that you might want to review before we vote on that consent agenda this afternoon. The Title II Math and Science Partnership Grants have been changed since the information was first submitted. That being the case, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Kathy Bush moves. Is there a second? Ken Willard seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, that's a 9-0 vote. Next, we need to approve the February minutes. Do I hear a motion to do so? Steve Roberts moves. Deana Horst seconds the motion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. That was 9-0 as well. We will move on now to our Commissioner's Report. Dr. Debacker.
Well, good morning, everybody. I'd like to begin with just a note of personal privilege, if you don't mind, and thank you all for all of your support and guidance and words and prayers for my father-in-law. As you know, he'd been ill for about six weeks, and he passed away on Sunday. And so, thank you all. I think I've heard from most all of you, either with phone calls or emails, so thank you very much. I will not be attending with you tomorrow at the School for the Deaf and School for the Blind. Brad is going to be with you, and Peggy is going along, since she's never been to that visit. And so, thank you. I know Jana has all of the service arrangements, if any of you are interested in anything, so I'll let you work with her. Two topics to visit about today. One you had in your packet and you have in your folder, and it says, "School Success Starts in the Early Learning Years." So, I wanted to go through that very quickly, because that's what we have been presenting to the Special Committee on All-Day Kindergarten. We have been in front of them many times, myself, Gail Stubber, and several others, to talk about all-day kindergarten and why the state board has had that as an agenda item as a priority over the past several years. So, I'll discuss that very quickly. That was going to be the sole topic during Commissioner's Report, but yesterday was the first day of the assessment window. I know each of you have received over the past week or so some emails from the field, some phone calls from the field about different things happening as we rolled out that new assessment system. So, Brad is going to spend quite a bit of the Commissioner's Report, or at least the two of us will spend between now and 10:30, talking about kindergarten and what we saw on the first day of the rollout of this new assessment. I felt if we did not address that, we would eventually be getting questions from you, so it seems to be in a little bit more organized manner to talk about that first day of the assessment window. Beginning with kindergarten, we prepared, we have sent much, a lot of information. In fact, this stack is just one stack that we sent to the Special Committee on All-Day Kindergarten, just the history of all-day kindergarten, the history from other states, 50-state analysis of things going on. But we wanted to put our thoughts in a little bit more organized fashion, so that's where the "School Success Starts in the Early Learning" handout came from. And presented this on February 13th to the Special Committee. And beginning with the very front page, I'm not going to walk you through each one of these pages, but just the state pays for half-day kindergarten, and the other half-day, if school districts want to offer all-day kindergarten, comes out of their own budgets, whether that's through their general fund. Most use the at-risk funding that they can access for that. Some school districts charge a fee, and that fee runs anywhere from $250 up to $2,750, depending on the district. 271 of the 286 offer all-day kindergarten. So, most of our districts offer all-day kindergarten. Kindergarten is not mandatory in the state of Kansas. Students have to be children, have to be in school by the age of seven, and that's the magic number in Kansas, so kindergarten is not required. There was some discussion at the beginning of when the governor announced that he wanted to fund all-day kindergarten, that it would be mandatory. Nowhere in any of his information was that indicated, so it's not a mandatory all-day. It's still up to the parents to make that decision as to whether or not their student wants to go to kindergarten at all. So, it's been a state board goal from the research that we've done for at least 10 years. You, as a state board, a combination of 10 members, some of you were here not long ago and some of you were not, but it's been a goal for the state board for 10 years. What we put together in this packet was a little bit of research that we've done in-state and research from across the United States, because all-day kindergarten is discussed all across the United States as to whether or not you get the benefit for the cost. So, on that very first page, page one in the middle, we kind of sum it up this way: Best practices are more frequently seen in full-day kindergarten classrooms rather than kindergartens that are scheduled for half-day. So, when you think about best practices that teachers use, whether they're kindergarten teachers or high school teachers, we've found that there are about six different areas that if you have a full day, the teachers are better able to work with the students. And you see at the bottom of page one, and this came from a survey that we've done here in Kansas, that if you have a whole, a full day, kids are better able to use manipulatives, so they're better able to use things to help them understand. And we talk about materials such as toys, art materials, Unifix cubes, and other manipulatives that you would see in a classroom. That there's time for children to play through exploration and self-instruction in an all-day setting, that it's easier to do groupings, and so you think about our multi-tiered system of support that we have in Kansas, easier to do that if you have a full day than if you have a half-day. Students are encouraged to move independently to new activities when they're finished with a project. They're allowed extra time if they need extra time in that full-day kindergarten, and that they do a better job of transitioning when they're in a full day. And think about transitioning with five- and six-year-olds, if you've ever been around them, simply saying, "Okay, everybody line up, we are going to lunch." It's easier to do that when you have a full day of instruction. So, those are some of the best practices that we researched, saying, "If we have a full day, we can do those better." As you get to page three through six, for the most part, three through six is what we pulled from some national research. And the research is mixed on all-day kindergarten, and we acknowledge that the research is mixed. In some of the reports that you'll find, an Indiana report back in 2004, "All-day kindergarten reduced grade retention and reduced special ed referrals." In Ohio in 1984, they said there was remarkable clear evidence that participation in full-day kindergarten positively related to subsequent school performance. A meta-analysis done in 2010 says that full-day kindergarten had positive association with academic achievement at the end of kindergarten, but the association disappeared by third grade. So, you probably heard the term fade, that there's sometimes a fade effect with all-day kindergarten, that there are great gains in those all-day classrooms, but by the time they get to third grade, that that is not quite as obvious. So, some of the studies show that. We felt it was very important with the Special Committee on All-Day Kindergarten to show research from both different perspectives. Another one done in 2006 says that the differences largely evaporated by third grade. So, that's what you're going to find on pages four and five. We put several of those in there for people to research on their own, but we then also summarize those, and so you can do that as you read through it. But here's what we found in our own research, and what one study found about closing the achievement gap, is that 50% of students right now in Kansas, according to our records, 49.6%, so I need to not round up to 50, but 49.6% of our students in Kansas qualify for free and reduced lunch. And much of the research shows that students who come in at a disadvantage, in other words, they come in from lower socioeconomic status, their gap closes quicker with all-day kindergarten. And so, that's been a big focus of what we've seen from the legislature this past session. So, as you go to pages seven and through the end of the report, that is research that we've done here in Kansas. Gail Stubber, Dr. Gail Stubber, you've seen her with you many times before. We did a school readiness project, and on that school readiness project, we've been able to track kids or to follow kids for several years. And our conclusion, it's the very last line on page seven, is that "When combined with a full-day program, intensive use of developmentally appropriate teaching strategies have a lasting effect on a child's education." Our own research, our Kansas research, shows that all-day kindergarten makes a difference. The charts that you see on pages eight and nine are just, that show the beginning effects and the end effects of kindergarten in our own research. We presented this on February 13th. Gail then appeared back in front of the committee a few weeks later. This all-day kindergarten has received mixed support, and I think Deana and Ken can tell you more about that from the legislature, with what came out on Friday from the Supreme Court with funding. Who knows what will happen with this, if it will get folded in with something else. But we can confidently say that the All-Day Kindergarten Committee has very up-to-date, accurate, honest information from the State Department of Education as to what the research says on all-day kindergarten. Would have gone into some of that in a little bit more detail, and we'll be happy to entertain any questions, but would also like to take 15 minutes at least for Brad to talk about what took place on opening day, opening day of the season of assessment. So, Chairman, if you want to take questions now or hold until Brad's done, it's up to you.
Let's go ahead. If anyone does have a question for Diane regarding the full-day kindergarten initiative, seeing none, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Brad.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair and Board. What I thought I'd do, yesterday was opening season on state assessments, but what I thought I'd do is walk back and bring you up to what brought us to yesterday. What I'm going to share with you, and copies are going around, if you look at this PowerPoint, you look down at the bottom, this was the PowerPoint that, a year ago, March 12th, Tom and I were standing here, and we gave you this PowerPoint. And I'm going to walk through it, so you can kind of get an understanding of what we had in plan as we wanted to come into the 2014 assessment year. This slide here was developed back in late 2009 on what would be Kansas's plan to move forward once we had already adopted new standards, and at that time, were involved with the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. If you see the blue box clear to the right, in 2015, a year from now, we would have our full operational new assessment. And for the past several years, our plan at that time would have been smarter balanced. That was in the blue box. So, our new assessment, fully developed, won't be available for another year. What's in the red box four years ago were what were our options this spring. Well, the only option we really knew that we had at that time was to once again give the old test aligned to the old standards again this spring. Now, we had listed on there that we might try to, if opportunities came up, we might try to make some adjustments to this spring, but this was the plan that we had going back to four years ago. Well, on December 21st of 2012, again, this was the presentation we gave you a year ago, December 21st of 2012, we received a letter from the U.S. Department of Ed encouraging states to move forward towards the transition to those new assessments. And whatever changes we made to the assessment, we would not have to send them in for peer review. So, as soon as we received that letter, we started looking at what our options were. So, we felt in 2014, a little over a year ago, it would be possible for us to modify the old assessment and create something new this spring, which we eventually called the transitional assessment. So, what we looked at was three options. We could either shorten the old assessment by removing one of the sections. We could embed more college and career-ready items that were lined into the old test, or we could just create a whole new assessment this spring aligned to the college and career-ready standards that had some technology-enhanced items, and that's the one that ended up being chosen. Well, what we did is we came up with a list of pros and cons a little over a year ago of making a change. And I've listed, these were the same ones that were presented a year ago, first look at new test items, it gives them an experience on it, but I want to go to this one. And I highlighted in blue, it allows the experience with the new test engine for teachers and students, which is KITE. And if we want the details of the difference between KITE and the old one, I have Dr. Scott Myers behind me, that can get into the weeds, but it is a whole new engine. And I think people need to understand, and I'll bring it up again later, we weren't planning on using originally this new test engine this year. It wasn't going to be used until another year, in 2015. But it gives more lead time for districts to resolve technical problems. These were some of the pros and cons that we were looking at with the new transitional test. There was a whole nother list of things that we were considering, what were pros and cons. Another one, we knew, here's some of the cons. Problems will happen, and districts will need assistance. It'll require modifications in some districts and their systems and configurations. We knew that was a con to any decision. If we wanted to move away from giving the old test again this year, that would have now been four years out of alignment to the standards. So, we walked through all of these. We met with the curriculum leaders across the state, the Kansas Assessment Advisory Council, the Council of Superintendents. Then we pulled together a conference call with curriculum directors, superintendents, high school principals, middle school principals, elementary school principals, the Assessment Advisory Council. I traveled around, and Diane, and many of us, and Tom at that time, to service centers, went through all those pros and cons. And I didn't keep a tab, but I did not have one person say, "Yes, let's administer that old test again in 2014." It was pretty much unanimous, let's move forward. So, we are exactly where we wanted to be. But as we know, anytime, you know, when we went from paper to pencil to a computerized test, it took six years to work it all out. So, we know that there are technical issues, but again, we wanted to pilot a whole new test on a whole new engine that we would be using a year from now, and work out the bugs and drive that engine in a year when, as you'll notice on your agenda, one of our agenda items at 11:45, the recommendation from the QPA Advisory Council coming to you that we talked about last month is, regardless of the results on this test, we want next year, all schools, you're accredited. We want to learn as much as we can this year, not only on the test KITE engine, but how are kids performing on new item types, on items that are aligned to the new standards? How are they? So, it's going to be a great learning year for schools, but we have to kind of remember, we knew the pros and cons going into it, now we're kind of experiencing it. But this was the actions that were brought to the board. Obviously, the board approved the first one, and that was the recommendation from the field that we contract with CETE to modify the old assessment, which was current at that time, and align it to the college and career-ready standards, English, language, arts, math, do all the enhancements that we wanted. And I think just some important notes to remember is that the KITE test engine is how we administer an assessment. It doesn't matter if it's the test that CETE develops or the Smarter Balanced, those are just questions. Those are test items. KITE is the engine that you deliver it on. KITE was originally planned to be used first in 2015, but again, the field, all the input, let's pilot that engine this year with a test that's aligned to the standards with enhanced items. So, what we did, march in 2013 with the board's vote, is we basically asked CETE, "Can you have it ready a year in advance for us to pilot?" And they said, "We'll do whatever you ask." So, here we are. And CETE has done a fabulous job, countless hours of getting this ready for us to pilot a year before we intended to. So, I know you're hearing, "I've got to do a better job this afternoon. We're going to send out another message to the field," just kind of reminding them that these are the things that we said we wanted to pilot this year, give it your best effort. So, with that, if there's any questions, I know I didn't have a lot of time, but...
We do have a few questions. Kathy Bush?
And you said Scott Myers, but...
Did I say Scott Myers?
Yeah, Scott Smith.
That guy has that effect on him. Dr. Scott Smith. They both have doctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question for those watching and listening, just to reinforce, because you've kind of said it. KITE, we would have used even with Smarter Balanced next year.
Absolutely.
It's the new test engine, and we're using it with CETE, and even if we'd gone with Smarter Balanced, it's the same test engine.
That is.
We're just rolling it out this year instead of next year.
So, the board's vote in December to go with CETE to develop the test instead of Smarter Balanced had no effect on this spring, because this spring, you had already approved a year ago that we wanted CETE to develop this transitional. The great thing about that vote last year, they were a year in advance now to be better prepared as they develop our new assessment.
Thank you.
Jim McNeese?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brad, how'd day one go?
Some did very well, some are struggling. A lot of it's their, it's software systems, it's on their end, on CETE, so, but I think one of the challenges we had, we did not anticipate, not only did so many people log in to give the summative assessment, but we had several thousand log in at the same time to administer the formatives. So, it's just...
It stretched the system.
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't know if Scott can give me, Scott works daily with CETE, so...
The ratio of completed to attempted tests is not one that we're necessarily happy with, but we are putting in patches, CETE's putting in patches every night to increase the server capacity on there. And so, as Brad said, there was a large number of people. Our goal is to make certain that, you know, if everyone in Kansas wanted to test at the same time, we need to be able to have that capacity. But in terms of rolling that out on the first day, yes. And part of that is owing to our having trimmed some time off of the testing window on the front end. So, schools are looking at a shorter testing window, so they may be closer to spring break, and we needed that time to, quite frankly, finish, get the test ready. So, that disrupted a little bit the trend of how tests were administered in the past, but there, as Brad said, there was a large number.
So, the how, not the test questions, but the how we do it in the adaptive format, you know, the bandwidth is there to do it, but we even overloaded our bandwidth.
Yes, a couple of things. It's not a bandwidth issue.
Okay, it's not a bandwidth.
It's a server, cache server issue.
Okay, better to know.
On CETE. And the other good news is, there were nothing about the items themselves. In fact, it's just the opposite. That's a good news story.
That's excellent.
Absolutely. The content of the test, people are very happy with that. We've got also, on the dynamic learning maps and on the alternate assessment, some really positive feedback from the kinds of experience, the experience that the students will have with these new items. So, that's a good news. Again, it's this engine. And as Brad said, it's a feeble consolation if you're, if you are a person out there in the field trying to get on and take this test to say, "Well, we knew this was going to happen." And that's, and I don't mean to suggest that that's our response, but, you know, we're trying to respond as fast, as fast as we can to very particular problems. Tickets is another thing. I'm sure if you've gotten specific questions, it's been about printing tickets. And that's, one of the other new features this year is linking students with teachers with courses. And unless that linkage is 100% precise, error messages are received. So, we can all imagine the difficulty statewide. So we can all imagine the difficulty statewide of trying to make certain that everybody has an accurate roster of exactly those numbers of students in your class, no fewer, no more, matches up with the right class and the right teacher. And once that works, then we can move forward with tickets. And it's new.
Well, I'd like to say to the board and to our folks out there in the state, we have a pretty sophisticated testing organization within our state that has a high level of expectation about how the how the KITE is going to perform. So there was some frustration yesterday on tickets, you know, and adaptive questions that, you know, didn't work, couldn't drag, you know. But the questions that I heard yesterday from folks in the field were actually really good questions and issues. And they're all the issues that can be addressed. So I don't want us to get confused or to become, you know, oh my gosh, this isn't going to work. Actually, the first day, I think you had a pretty good first day. There's some frustrated people out there, but overall, you know, the sophistication we have within the teaching, as well as the students in taking these assessments, they have high expectations for us, and I have high expectations for you as well as for CETE, and I think those will be fulfilled. They'll do a good job. So thank you.
Ken Willard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the good news is I haven't had any complaints. Maybe they just went directly to you and Scott, I don't know. But some would say, if you're making this dramatic change, that it would be better to pilot with a smaller group than to just do it across the board, pilot the entire state. Can you speak to that, about why? I know you said that nobody wanted to use the old assessment, and I understand that that would have been very problematic. But could you just elaborate on that a bit? Why we didn't pilot in a small group rather than the entire state?
Couple of things. One of them is timing, getting it developed first to be able to even do a pilot. Now, we have with formatives, we've had people on the system, but until we had such a large scale and knowing that under accountability, all kids still have to take the assessment, we still have to administer it, we weren't going to know any of the real big issues until thousands of people hit the server at once.
Right.
So, I mean, there was a lot of testing of it early on, but we would not have known the issues that we dealt with yesterday until hundreds of thousands of kids hit it all at once.
Right.
So I don't know.
Trying to come up with a shorter answer. One is just, one is just the logistical issue of running two test engines at the same time. So, so these are worlds apart, these two engines. So it would have been simply a matter of, say, I have a building with 100 students. Well, if we had run a smaller pilot, we would have, say, some students logging into a machine, taking, using the older engine, which is sort of like Microsoft Word, you load it on every machine, and you've got another number of students, say the pilot group, using this new engine. That was, we learned, would be the source of frustration for the tech people within a building. We've got these two systems going on, and then it would be very difficult for CETE once the oldest, you know, they were very, very clear, if we're going to move away from this old engine, we better be darn sure that that's what you want, because when that's gone, that's gone. And these new item types wouldn't be necessarily working, compatible with both engines either. So, and at the time, we were still in Smarter Balanced. So that would have presented three variables within a school. We would have had potentially a pilot group with Smarter Balanced, students taking the, you know, the old test engine, and then another subset of students taking the new engine, and it was, so, but I don't necessarily disagree that a smaller, in terms of just numbers, a smaller pilot is, you know, is always more manageable.
Your answer was longer than mine.
Deana Horst.
Madam Chair, just follow.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. We're using an interim assessment this year, and we're going to be using interim again next year, is that correct?
Well, next year's test will be the test. The items that they're, the test items that they're taking this year, they are next year's test. Which, again, was a huge advantage a year ago when the board voted to develop this transitional test. This is our new test. It will, we'll take this test and add enhanced items, because every item pretty much on the test this year, they're pilot items. So this summer, they'll go through, find out which questions didn't have the effect, throw them out, and then that will be next year's test with enhancements. They'll add listening to it. They'll have...
Writing.
Writing to it, so some performance items. So this is the backbone of next year's test.
Okay.
Next year's will be fully operational.
Okay, then I'm a bit confused, because I thought you said that we were going to be delayed to 2016 since we made the change.
We, and I think we could come next month and take a little deeper dive. All the questions that are being administered on this year's test will now be scoreable next year, because we piloted them this year. All the enhancements that we'll add to it next year, even though it's a full-blown test, all of those questions that it's the first time, they're piloting it.
Okay.
So it'll be 16 until it's fully scoreable.
Okay.
And fully operational.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of the questions, actually, they've been comments from teachers saying, maybe we should have just stuck with Smarter Balance. Do, are we suggesting to school districts that they inform their teachers that KITE would have been used as well? So they're not thinking that we would have had a different presentation for them? And that's one question. And the other one, I seem to be hearing basically from one school district. So are there some school districts that have some connection issues that need to be worked out, or that we maybe, and if so, are, what are we doing to assist them?
We have a help desk, and CET has a help desk. And what we're finding is every district, some of them have similar, and in our curriculum leaders and Assessment Advisory Council members are doing a really good job of helping us field questions. Most of their questions, there's already answers to, and CET has developed a place for them to go directly to with questions and answers and how to work through it. Some of them are unique to a district, some of them are unique to similar districts, but we're addressing every concern either on the phone with them or also building those frequently asked questions that they can go directly to. But we're dealing with every district as their issues arise. To your first question, you are correct. This has nothing to do with whether it was a Smarter Balance test or the one CET will eventually develop. KITE is the car that we're going to drive someone to, some test. So it's not a Smarter Balanced or CET decision.
My question was whether we had encouraged the leadership of those districts to inform their teachers of that fact.
And as I mentioned earlier this afternoon, depending on how the board votes on the QPA Advisory Council recommendation, as soon as you have a vote, oh, Denise and I'll be drafting a message this afternoon to go out to the field, just to inform them, give them many of these talking points again, that was discussed a year ago, and try to clarify some of these, these important notes that, you know, KITE was our engine this year, or starting next year and in the future, regardless of what test was delivered on it.
I may just have to email those folks back and tell them again that...
We'll get that message to you, too.
That that's the case. But I'm just certain that if there are a few out there, there are probably many more.
And they've been through a lot the last few years, huh?
So, thank you.
Thank you. I had a quick question, Brad. Is the KITE engine exclusively used in Kansas? Was it developed here? Or is it being used in other places?
It is, for example, with the Dynamic Learning Maps, which is a consortium, this is the alternate assessment, and that is a consortium of states. And in that, that's an instance in which, yes, KITE is the engine that's used for all of those states that are participating in the...
Okay. I didn't know if it was exclusively used here, or how it had been developed.
Just, just as I was remembering as Brad was talking, being when we were still part of Smarter Balanced in a council chief state school officers meeting, and they were looking at those states that they knew would have, I'll call them proprietary or state-level testing engines, other than those that were going to be used by Smarter Balanced in Park. And the head of CCSSO had said at the time, it's very important for Kansas and North Carolina, the two sort of states, to kick the tires on their new engine as soon as possible. Because at that time, they needed to know that Smarter Balance test would be operational on that assessment.
Okay. Thank you very much. I now declare the Citizens Open Forum of the Kansas Board of Education meeting open at 10:42 a.m. The State Board provides the opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. The State Board also asks that speakers identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent, if applicable. The State Board asks that each speaker focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Any board clarifications will be for clarification. Our first speaker is Sandy Crowther.
Thank you. I'm Sandy Crowther, and I'm Executive Director of Learning Forward Kansas, which is an affiliate association of the International Organization of Learning Forward. First of all, and many of you were here in 2012 when I was here with our then-president, and you did approve the Learning Forward standards for our state. And so we have been doing lots of things to help people know those standards, but we also want your support in helping move that forward. Part of it's an issue with the website and so forth, but we've been working with staff members to create that. The standards, and I think Vicky is handing out, just so you have the seven, there are seven, there used to be 12, and the seven are easier to work from, and they're all research-based. And when districts and educators put these in place, it really makes a difference, not only for students, but also for educators. And we're talking about teachers and administrators. There are shifts needed. One is the high expectations for application of learning, coupled with coaching and other forms of support, needs to be there for implementation. Regular scheduled learning opportunities are part of the workday and week, and in many parts of Kansas, that is true. Collaborative teams face cycles of learning that build deeper expertise in meaningful assessment. And here, we've just been talking about assessments. And we're driven by student, educator, and system data. And that's very important. And I'm sure you've heard people say, we do look at our data, but it needs to be systemic. It needs to be not just the test results of students, but how are people implementing? What are people doing? How are they collaborating? So I'm going to turn it to Vicky, who will, Bichard, who's our secretary, who will continue.
Thank you, Sandy. I'm Secretary of Kansas Learning Forward, Vicky Bichard. One of the things that we have done is we've tried to spread the word about the professional learning standards is to use a business model that Simon Sinek developed that talks about the why, the how, and the what. And as we have so many changes that are going through Kansas, I mean, this is, this is a critical piece to use, and Lois Easton-Brown has applied this professional learning as well. We would, we would like to see professional learning standards used as the framework to implement the various changes that are going on in the state right now. Those changes might be Kansas College and Career Ready Standards, educator evaluations, changes in technology, or what have you. The goal of these is to improve educator effectiveness and student achievement. And so that's important, that we tie and make connections to the professional learning that's going on in a school or a district to those results. We also want to emphasize that professional learning is for all educators, including administrators, and not just teachers. And it might be a support staff as well. So professional learning needs to address all the educators in the building. We would like to have you help us encourage that the goal of every school and educator is to have effective professional learning. And we don't want to call it staff development anymore. We want this to be about learning and modeling that for students as well. We want to identify what that looks like and to be effective, and to share and model that with schools throughout the state. Learning Forward has attempted to spread the word through conferences and regional labs, and we are now offering ourselves to go into districts and work directly with them. We're trying to share this on social media and do some various things to get the word out, in addition to the traditional things like conferences and things like that. And we would simply ask for your help, because your spread, your reach is so wide compared to ours. And so anything you can do to help us spread the word will just make our kids and our teachers that much more effective. So, any questions?
I have the one, they have a question. Oh, and I want to end. Okay.
Steve Roberts has a question.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Professional learning standards. Is this codified into a document somewhere? Do you have a list of what these standards are that apply to all educators?
We have the standards right there that were approved in 2012 by the State Board.
These are the standards?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good.
And, you know, with the shift with the new website and things at KSDE, you know, some of those things have not been as easily accessible just yet, but we've been talking with people at KSDE about making those so you can click and find pretty quickly. And we just need to get that message out to superintendents and to educators that this is what you need to be using to make your changes happen, so.
Sandy has one more thing to offer.
In April, Stephanie Hirsch, who is the Executive Director of Learning Forward, is going to be in Kansas for our state conference, and we moved to Topeka so that she can also be a part of your State Board meeting in April. So she's, she obviously is a person who totally understands these and probably can ask, answer even better questions than we can. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rhonda Holt.
My name is Rhonda Holt, and I am here on behalf of KFORD, our State Physical Education Association. After teaching physical education for 33 years, I am fortunate now that I get to work with teachers across the state on a project called Let's Move Active Kansas Schools. And the purpose of this initiative is to help students achieve the recommended 60 minutes of physical activity every day by being more active before, during, and after school. With support from KFORD, KSDE, and the Kansas Health Foundation, over 220 teachers, physical education teachers across the state, have attended an intensive one-day training on Let's Move Active Schools. And I really wanted to try to highlight a strategy from each of your state districts, but time doesn't allow that. However, I can assure you that the stories I'm going to share, there are many more that were, are equally fun, innovative, and exciting. At Eisenhower Elementary School in Norton, students are rewarded with special physical activities when they reach certain reading milestones. And this has been a great way to increase physical activity, as well as a healthy way to reward students to read more. Brain breaks have become an important part of class... Brain breaks have become an important part of classes at May's Middle School. And one of the science teachers there is totally sold on the benefits of these physical activity breaks. She believes that the rewards are immediate and that the students are invigorated and ready to learn. At Lawrence Elementary School in Wichita, having tardy and absent students is a daily challenge. And this year, they've started a morning activity program, and the school is seeing an increase in students that get to school on time and a decrease in absenteeism. Krista McCall of School in Shawnee Mission has a fitness room that's used as a reward for students for periodic activity breaks, and they use it some prior to state testing with some very encouraging results. Eisenhower Middle School, right here in Topeka, started a walk-and-talk program. It started as a one-day initiative and became so popular that the administration approved it to be a daily activity. And now, there's up to 175 middle schools starting their day off with a positive experience by coming to school and walking. At Spade Elementary School, a teacher recently told me that he's seeing a great value in getting to know his students and parents better by his after-school soccer and intramurals program. So, as you can see, there's huge potential for changing the culture of our schools and creating an environment where movement is a part of the entire day. Let's Move Active Kansas Schools is the perfect tool to help us achieve this goal at little or no cost. And that's great news, because ultimately, students are the ones who will be the real winners in these efforts. My email is on the handout that I provided, as well as some other information that I would encourage you to look at. I could talk for 30 minutes about the project, but I know I had three, so thank you for your time and your interest. I hope all of you have a chance to get out and see some of these success strategies being implemented in your own state districts. I talked fast. Any questions?
Questions?
If I'd known I had 30 seconds, I would have had you get up and do a brain break. I won't do that, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kirk Fast.
I don't have things prepared for me today, so... But I'm here because, as everyone's aware, we recently had the Supreme Court decision regarding school funding come down. And of course, that's all on paper and all printed. The reason I mention that is personally, I believe that each of you as elected officials representing the state at large have a duty and obligation to publicly respond to that. When should you do that? I think really as soon as possible. The handwriting's on the wall. We certainly know that there's the 120-plus million... I don't have the facts with me here to be exact regarding bonds and LOBs that should be out there in the next few months. And then, of course, it's probably going to go back to... Or it's going back to the district courts to get state-based aid figured out. I think it's quite clear that that recommendation is going to involve dollars, is going to involve significant dollars. I'm not going to ask any of you to mirror my position on it, but I do think your constituents deserve to know what each of your positions on it. I think they deserve to know, get some clarification from each of you, how you view that, what your views are, what you intend to do, what you would encourage them to do as responsible citizens. So, I know this adds a little bit to your workload, but again, I think that's why they pay you the big bucks that they do. And so, again, I encourage all of you to get active, to advocate your own response to this, to help educate your constituents, and then to follow through as much as possible. How might you do that? You can... Everybody's got papers. I bet there is not any district here that would not print a guest column from their elected representative fully detailing these things that I just requested. I believe all of the state is served by radios. I think you could probably find some hosts who would be glad to entertain you as well, so that you could broadcast to those who do not read papers, which is a considerable number. There are school boards, there are chambers of commerce, there are other interested stakeholders. Please feel free to contact them all. Let's move forward where everyone is equally educated, informed, and can make progress in response to this very, very important decision. I know personally, my schools have suffered in recent years. We've lost one of our three schools. We've lost numerous teachers. Our class sizes increased, and our offerings have been reduced. I've got kids in school. I don't find that acceptable. I don't have the authority. I know you all don't write legislation. I know you all don't write court opinions, but you're in a position of influence. Use it productively. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheila Officer.
Good morning. My name is Sheila Officer. I am from Wichita, Kansas, and I am a mother who has raised three children in the Wichita School District, UST 259, as well as a godchild and a grandchild. I am in opposition to the zero tolerance policy. I thank you so much, first of all, for letting me speak this morning. One out of six black children has been suspended at least once while in school. This compared to one in 20 white children in the school districts. A national study was done for the year of 2010 and 2011, conducted by Mr. Gussland, with the fundings from the U.S. Department of Education, as well as the Bureau of Justice. In that study, it was found that African-Americans, while we represent 17% of their age group in the general population, they represent 46% of juvenile arrests, 31% of those refer to juvenile court, and 41% of waivers to adult court. Those are alarming numbers. And on January 18, 2014, President Obama declared that there was going to be changes in... Excuse me. The discipline, which would hopefully end the disparities in how students of color were punished for violations of school rules. It is widely known that there is an overzealous policy, that the zero tolerance is an overzealous policy, that targets black and Hispanic students. It pushes them out of the school doors and into the doors of the criminal justice system. Attorney General Holder said, and I agree, "Effective discipline is always and will always be a necessity, but a routine school discipline infraction should land a student in the principal's office and not in a police precinct." Statistics shows that African-American students are three times more likely than white students to be expelled and are suspended. Students with disabilities are even at a higher number. Though they make up 12% of the students in the U.S., they make up almost 20% of those being suspended and almost 25% of those being arrested. There has to be remedies advocated and implemented to change this, state, local, and federal level. There has to be reform. New and improved policies, the remedies, the racial and ethnic inequalities, and educational opportunities that bar our children from success. Suspension and expulsions is not a treatment. Remaining a student in school is important, and not only for our communities, but for the student's success in and of itself. I ask that you would work together with your constituents, families, communities, in resolving the problem. I ask that you take aim, then take action. Thank you so much. I'm open for questions.
Are there questions? Janet Waugh.
Thank you very much. I simply wanted to ask, have you made this presentation in front of the Wichita Board?
No, ma'am, but it's definitely coming.
Okay. I think that would be a good first step.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Walt Chapel.
You folks have a very nice new facility here. This is great. Good to see you all again. I'm following up on what Sheila Officer has had to say, specifically to provide you with some data from Wichita. And this is an issue while I was on the board that I've raised many times around this board table, and of course, Carolyn Campbell and others have tried to deal with, at the local level as well as at the state level. And that's zero tolerance. When you have a policy that says anytime that you do something that doesn't comply, you're out the door, suspended or expelled, that is really very difficult for those kids to get back in the saddle and learn and graduate. Now, depending upon which formula we use, about 25% of our kids in Kansas do not graduate right now. That number hopefully is getting better. I understand we have a new formula, and it may be showing higher numbers. But among the black and Hispanic males particularly, it's 30 to 40% dropout, do not ever complete a high school diploma. And when you have a large number of these students that are expelled or suspended, these are data from Wichita Public Schools that I'm sharing with you today. We've discussed these with the superintendent of schools on a number of occasions. Melody McCray-Miller, for one, a legislator, has been very actively involved with that issue, as is a number of other people on our racial profiling advisory board. But I want to bring your attention to what the numbers show. These were back in 2010, 2011, so we're trying to get an update. We don't know what the current figures are, but I want to share with you right now that 34% of the suspensions in Wichita were of African-American youth. When you combine that with the multiracial, you're looking at a total of 44% of the suspensions. It's my understanding that about 11% of the student body in Wichita is black. When we look at the expulsions, it's 38% of those students that were expelled are black students. When you combine that with multiracial, you're looking at a total of 48%. So, we have a major issue. No child left behind was a good goal. We don't want to leave any child behind. But I'm here to say, please, work with your local school districts, try to make this change, get it set up so that we discipline children within the classroom, we focus them on learning, we try to make sure that we understand their needs, what's ticked them off while they're coming to school with particular issues, and deal with it in the classroom and the building level. When it escalates to expulsion or suspension, now you have that kid on the street, and they are not able to really learn and get back into the groove. So, I thank you for your time. I hope that this is something that you can get on the board agenda and come up with a strategy that's statewide. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quickly, Walt, is there any relational database information sort of thing that correlates the racial information with socioeconomic? Is there any study in depth that takes these same numbers and breaks them out socioeconomically more than racial?
Well, as you know, it's very difficult to get a job if you're black in Kansas or any place in the United States, but particularly in Wichita, Kansas, been, I think, 30% unemployment. We have a large number of children, of course, in single-family homes, single-parent homes, and that's also an issue. There's a lot of problems that we have to deal with societally, and unfortunately, they come to our schools, and we try to deal with them within the school. This is not a blanket incrimination of anybody. But the zero tolerance policy psychologically does not work, and I know that Wichita has a program, Safe and Civil Schools, and the consultant that's been brought in, I believe from Oregon, has worked with him consistently to try to change that policy and make it more specific to each child's needs.
And respectfully, I agree that we have these issues to deal with. My question was related to whether or not there was like a longitudinal study that breaks this out, these very same categories into socioeconomics.
I'm not aware of that specifically, Mr. Roberts, but I can say to you that the data that we've received here at the State Board level, that's reported by the district to the KSDE, was only about one-fifth of these numbers. These numbers are internal data from the Wichita Public Schools. The numbers that were reported to us in the same years were one-fifth of these numbers. So, we're only getting at your level a small snapshot of what is really going on at the building level.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Good to see you again. Have a great day.
The State Board's Citizens Open Forum is closed at 11:06 a.m. We would like to thank our speakers for sharing their views with the board. The State Board will determine if any of the issues should be addressed as an agenda item at a future meeting. We do not have a planned break scheduled, but I would like to take five minutes for a short break, and then we will move forward with our agenda.
Here you go. For some reason, it goes to sleep before you get back.
Okay.
There's the password. Capital P, capital W.
It's under Scott. These are, for some reason, they're not in alphabetical order. Sometimes they are, sometimes they are not. Is it Scott or my...
It's Scott Meyer.
Which one?
There may be a station.
Okay, so I'm just going to reduce it, and then I'm going to pull her back up, because she's up. And basically, the inquiry method is one where you are allowing the children to discover the answer on their own rather than giving them all the answers to begin with. This is kind of the philosophy I use in teaching in all my subjects because I feel like the kids are able to take more ownership, and then when they discover the answer, they're really excited because, you know, they feel like detectives and they figured something out themselves. The pictures I have up here are just some examples of inquiry that I've done in my classroom. The one with all the trash is an inquiry activity I did where the students were wondering how much of the trash at Blue Jacket Flint could actually be recycled or composted. So they were wondering that, and they set up their own experiment, which really did involve digging through the trash. So that was a little yucky, but what they learned was, a really high percentage of the things that we were throwing away could actually be recycled or composted. And from that, the children and I worked together, we came up with a recycling program, and we're starting a composting program. So that was, you know, an example of using inquiry. And then we also have done a lesson with owl pellets where the students are wondering what the owl might have eaten, and then they're able to do an exploration where they dissect the owl pellets, put together the bones, and figure out what animal the owl had for dinner. So those are a couple examples there. Another thing that, just this year, I've really started getting excited about is implementing engineering in the classroom at the elementary level. I feel like, you know, once they get to middle school and high school, if they don't already have that confidence that they can solve problems and do engineering, I feel like we've almost lost them. So I really think it's important to help our kids experience engineering early on. So this year, I started an engineering challenge unit where the kids were exposed to all different types of engineering. We brought in real-world engineers, one from NASA, one from a solar energy company, and then the kids got to experience it themselves. They practiced mechanical engineering by building their own hovercraft and a marshmallow catapult. They learned about biomedical engineering by creating a prosthetic hand using hydraulics. They built some bridges. They also learned about aerospace engineering by making straw rockets, and it was a huge success. We spent about a month doing this, and the kids were really able to apply what they learned in science to solve problems using engineering. So that was really exciting this year. These are just some more pictures of the students doing engineering in the classroom, having a great time with it. Another thing that I feel is really important is partnering with universities and people in the community. You all may be familiar with the NSF-GK-12 project at K-State. With this project, they pair classroom teachers with graduate engineering students, and we help those graduate engineering students gain experience in communicating and planning lessons, and then what they give us is access to really neat technology and, you know, high-level science in the classroom. So this is just some pictures of our students working with Denise Case. She was our graduate engineering student from K-State. I mentioned community partnerships. One thing I try to do as an educator is look for any opportunity to bring in someone from the community. I feel like when we do that, then kids get that real-world connection. You know, one of the things that I started at my school a few years ago was a wellness day, and we brought in nutritionists, zumba instructors, yoga teachers. Our wellness day is actually this coming Thursday, and it's one of the highlights of the year for our students. We also do some reading units on perseverance. So each time we do that, I look for people who have really demonstrated perseverance and bring them into the classroom. We had a woman who hiked the Appalachian Trail. We had a couple Ironman triathletes, an officer in the Marines, and all those folks came in and basically helped the kids connect perseverance to real people in our community. I mentioned the engineering connections before. We had a NASA engineer come in. He actually worked on the Curiosity Rover on Mars, and he told us all about that, and that was really exciting. We did a robotics unit and had some engineers from Burns and McDonald come and lead lessons with the kids using Lego robotics. And then that picture down in the bottom left is some artists in the community who take trash, basically, and they make recycled robots and turn it into art. So that, again, had that green connection, had the artistic component, and they brought in their own recycled robot, and then the kids were able to make their own, so. We have a really great environmental education program at Blue Jacket Flint. We were named Kansas Green School of the Year last year and recognized in Washington, D.C., for that. One of my colleagues and I started the green team in 2008 with some grant funding, and from then, we have participated in lots of different challenges, from the Department of Energy's Home Energy Challenge, the We Can Save the World Challenge. We started the composting and recycling program, and we created one of the first rain gardens in the community. So this is something that brought together all sorts of folks in the community, plus parents and children from the school. Finally, I've had a focus in my science education of using, of incorporating health and wellness education. Started a marathon club with the students where they ran and tracked their mileage over a few weeks. They ran 25 miles, and then we did a kids' marathon at the school, so they ran the final 1.2 miles at the school, therefore completing the entire mileage of a marathon. So we started that a couple of years ago. We apply for the KSDE Power Up Grant, which has been phenomenal, providing lots of great resources and funding for our Wellness Day. And those are just some pictures of the students at our Wellness Day, you know, learning how to be healthy and some great strategies for living. So that, I think, is it. So if you guys have any questions, that'd be great, but thank you for having me. It's exciting to be here and talking to the Board of Education, so.
Well, I think we all want to thank you for what you're doing with science education. We, if I recall correctly, the engineering connection and the inquiry part of it were important components of the next-generation science standards that were approved here a few months ago. So it's, I think it would be fun to be in your science class.
Well, come on down, anytime. You can join us.
And Kathy Bush has a question.
Not a question, just real quick. I mean, what an exciting classroom you must have to be in. I hope you're sharing some of this information with some of your fellow teachers and able to do some presentations with some other folks because, as Jana said, this works perfectly with the new standards, and getting kids more engaged early in that inquiry method is just wonderful, and I love seeing it in an elementary school. I think that's really great. So kudos to you and what you're doing with your students there.
Thank you.
Okay, now you're a science expert. Now we're going to go to a math expert. Between the two, you might come up with $10,000, so. Anyway, we're excited about that, and Cindy Webber is an elementary teacher at West Elementary School in Wamigo, 320, and Cindy's excited to share. Ready?
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
I am so glorious just to be here today and to speak with you. I am very passionate about what I do and what I teach, not only mathematics but all of the grade levels. I am a third-grade teacher at Wamigo West Elementary in Wamigo, and it was a great honor to receive the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Up until 2005, and this is my 22nd year in teaching, but, and I've been at Wamigo since 2000, but up until 2005, I was the traditional procedural textbook type of math teacher. I modeled new skills great, and they gave them great formulated ways and sequences, how to do the exact same 20 problems in their textbook. They were great at performing these procedures, but did they really understand the conceptual understanding? Through professional development through Kansas State University with the help of David Allen and Lisa Hancock through the Education Department, my school changed our entire approach to teaching mathematics, and we changed it greatly for the better. We all began a great journey on professional development and teaching our children mathematics Conceptual mathematics means my students first learn by doing. We are really all, we forget those procedures. However, if you learn conceptually, you can reconstruct those concepts again when you've forgotten the procedure. There is a quote that Confucius says that I have posted on my classroom blog. "I hear and I forget, I see and I remember, and I do and I understand." In my classroom, my students are doing. My class, my math class is not a quiet setting during math. My students are immersed in problem solving. They are working in cooperative groups, discussing their strategies and solving given problems, when working with manipulatives to solve and making predictions based on what they collected. They are using discussion lingo that I've taught them so they can give their opinion to others in the group, and then they back up that opinion with their mathematical findings. When I introduce a new skill, such as addition with regrouping, as you see in the picture, they first learn using base 10 pieces. We do not teach the traditional logarithm first. First, we teach them hands-on. What does it mean? 27. That means you have two groups of 7. What does it look like? They have that in their hands. They know what it looks like and what it means to add 27 plus 36. Then, even before we go on to the traditional logarithm, we learn other methods and strategies because in my class, my students know it's not just getting the right answer, it's understanding, and we're all diverse learners, and we all learn different ways. And so different strategies that they might be taught is all partials, or they expand in form, or number line, and they, we can rely on any of these strategies to solve their mathematical problems. I want them to be able to share their problems and how they are correct with the students. But my students learn very early in the school year that it's not, I just don't want to hear the right answer. I want them to tell me how they solve the problem. I want to see how they solve the problem, and more than anything else, I want them to show how they solve their problems and share that with their peers. And so they are quick to raise their hand, not to give the correct answer anymore by this time of the year, but instead actually want me to come around with my iPad to take a picture of their work or go up on the Promethean Board so I can display their work, and they can share with their classmates how they solve the problem. Some students might have to draw a picture to solve the same problem. Others can write an equation. Others still might need to get a manipulative out, but that's okay because in my classroom, they teach each other what to do. So that child who was maybe using manipulative at the beginning of the year, once he has heard his peers find a strategy, he's like, oh, I can use that strategy now because I did not know that before. I could have sat there and taught them all these strategies, but the power of learning from your peers and group work is very powerful with the students. And in these pictures, you'll see some of my students in the very top picture with the yellow tiles, they're learning about area, and they are using square tiles, and then they're using, going on and putting them on square centimeter grid paper. And then in the other picture in the hallway, you see taped-off rectangular shapes, while the students, once again, they're learning about area in a different manner. We don't learn the formulated sequence on how to find area at this level, at this stage of the game, but we immerse them in ways what area really means. It's not a formula. And in the bottom picture, you'll see one little girl, she's using an iPad, and she's using a GeoBoard app, and she's making a shape and then finding the area and perimeter on the iPad. And another lesson that we do, it's called the Coda Mini Bits, and the students take those same base 10 pieces they used to understand place value, and since base 10 pieces are a perfect model, because a flat, which is worth 100, is worth really, is 100 square centimeters, they use and find the area of coats that we have traced for them. And then they find the area of coats, and then, not only that, the skills don't stop there. They go through the lesson, and then they all find the area of all their different sizes of coats, and then compare whose was greater, who was less. We find the median, the range, and there's so many skills immersed just in one lesson. And last week, or the week before, we went to Washington, D.C., because we were in Washington, D.C. last week, we started learning about multiplication arrays. And one of my students, they had these aha moments. They're like, oh, Mrs. Wilber, hey, this is 2 times 3, but if I just move my tiles, and the little girl in the bottom with the green tiles, if I just turn my hand, it's a turnaround fact because now it's 3 times 2. And it was her aha moment. Yeah, later on in the lesson, we were going to talk about turnaround facts, but they discovered it on their own because they are immersed in math. The other thing is, we hadn't talked yet about area and how multiplication was just like area. That was something that I was going to connect later on. But another little girl, right away, she said, oh, this is just like when we found area and perimeter at the beginning of the year. I can find the area of my rectangular array. This is not just multiplication, it's area. And so they make all of those connections when they learn conceptually. And conceptual, it's not just area and such. My students are immersed in the program that we use, which is Math Trailblazers at Wamigo. My students are immersed in other scientific labs in math class. And the great thing, back in 2005, when we switched from the traditional textbook to Math Trailblazers, my students were like, I didn't even realize we were doing math because it wasn't the standard 20 problems anymore. They were immersed in finding volume, and then they collect their data, and they had to do different trials, and then they used line plots and compared their data and patterns to other ones. So the thing is this, by creating this conceptual understanding in my classroom, I have gone from being the dictator of how problems are solved in my classroom to be more the facilitator of student learning in my classroom, and my students enjoy math immensely. And then these are, Lindsey and I did go to Washington, D.C. last week, and these are some pictures of us from, this, the first one is from our awards banquet, and then this was the first night of meet and greet, and we did get to meet President Obama, and he did shake our hands, so, and that was kind of a surreal experience for us both. So thank you for taking the time to listen, to have us here today.
Thank you. Exciting. Things are happening in your classroom as well. Kathy Bush.
Well, thank you, Cindy. This was...
to hear the right answer. I want them to tell me how they solve the problem. I want to see how they solve the problem. And more than anything else, I want them to show how they solve their problems and share that with their peers. And so, they are quick to raise their hand, not to give the correct answer anymore by this time of the year, but instead actually want me to come around with my iPad to take a picture of their work or go up on the Promethean board so I can display their work and they can share with their classmates how they solve the problem. Some students might have to draw a picture to solve the same problem. Others can write an equation. Others still might need to get a manipulative out. But that's okay because in my classroom, they teach each other what to do. So, that child who was maybe using manipulative at the beginning of the year, once he has heard his peers find a strategy, he's like, "Oh, I can use that strategy now because I did not know that before." I could have stood there and taught them all these strategies, but the power of learning from your peers and group work is very powerful with the students. And in these pictures, you'll see some of my students in the very top picture with the yellow tiles, they're learning about area. And they are using square tiles, and then they're going on and putting them on square-centimeter grid paper. And then in the other picture in the hallway, you'll see taped-off rectangular shapes. Well, the students, once again, they're learning about area in a different manner. We don't learn the formulated sequence on how to find area at this level, at this stage of the game, but we immerse them in ways what area really means. It's not a formula. And in the bottom picture, you'll see one little girl, she's using an iPad, and she's using a GeoBoard app, and she's making a shape and then finding the area and perimeter on the iPad. And another lesson that we do, it's called the Coda Mini Bits. And the students take those same base-10 pieces they used to understand place value. And since base-10 pieces are a perfect model, because a flat, which is worth 100, is worth really 100 square centimeters, they use and find the area of coats that we have traced for them. And then they find the area of coats. And then, not only that, the skills don't stop there. They go through the lesson, and then they all find the area of all their different sizes of coats, and then compare whose was greater, who was less. We find the median, the range, and there's so many skills immersed just in one lesson. And last week, or the week before, we went to Washington DC because we were in Washington DC last week, we started learning about multiplication arrays. And one of my students, they had these aha moments. They're like, "Oh, Mrs. Wilber, hey, this is 2 times 3, but if I just move my tiles," and the little girl in the bottom with the green tiles, "if I just turn my hand, it's a turnaround fact because now it's 3 times 2." And it was her aha moment. Later on in the lesson, we were going to talk about turnaround facts. But they discovered it on their own because they are immersed in math. The other thing is, we hadn't talked yet about area and how multiplication was just like area. That was something that I was going to connect later on. But another little girl, right away, she said, "Oh, this is just like when we found area and perimeter at the beginning of the year. I can find the area of my rectangular array. This is not just multiplication, it's area." And so, they make all of those connections when they learn conceptually. And conceptual, it's not just area and such. My students are immersed in the program that we use, which is Math Trailblazers at Wamigo. My students are immersed in other scientific labs in math class. And the great thing, back in 2005 when we switched from the traditional textbook to Math Trailblazers, my students were like, "I didn't even realize we were doing math." Because it wasn't the standard 20 problems anymore. They were immersed in finding volume, and then they collect their data, and they had to do different trials, and then they used line plots and compared their data and patterns to other ones. So, the thing is this, by creating this conceptual understanding in my classroom, I have gone from being the dictator of how problems are solved in my classroom to be more the facilitator of student learning in my classroom. And my students enjoy math immensely. And then Lindsey and I did go to Washington DC last week, and these are some pictures of us from, the first one is from our awards banquet, and then this was the first night of meet and greet. And we did get to meet President Obama, and he did shake our hands. And that was kind of a surreal experience for us both. So, thank you for taking the time to listen, to have us here today.
Thank you. Exciting. Things are happening in your classroom as well. Kathy Bush.
Well, thank you, Cindy. This was, I really enjoyed this. So, you switched to this conceptual type of methodology in 2005?
Yes, we sure did.
So, you've had a length of time?
Yes.
That you've been doing this. So, tell me what you're seeing kind of over time with your students as, I mean, you've got students that are probably up in high school by now, maybe?
Exactly.
So, what are you seeing with those kids?
We see that those kids understand the basic foundation of math. It's just not, "Oh, here's the logarithm, and this is how you get the answer." They understand a deeper understanding. And the great thing is, it's not only our elementary school that uses conceptual math, but our middle school and our high school also. And so, it's, and the thing also, it's not just a few of us that are doing it and continually having professional development. Melissa Hancock and Dr. Sherry Martini through K-State also, where most, a lot of the math teachers from the elementary level and the middle school and high school are in a program called Project Quest where we go for two weeks at K-State. And in the morning, we learn deep content from the math professors, and in the afternoon, it's more about math practices and how we need to have those great math practices in our classroom. And so, we're all continual learners, as I always tell my students.
Well, thank you. It sounds like you are, and it sounds like it's having an impact in your classroom, but also your district.
Yes, definitely so. Thank you.
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it's really exciting to see and hear what successes that you are having. And for many of us, this is a new, kind of a new approach. And I hear from a lot of parents, a lot of confusion. So, could you address how, since you've had that experience over a period of time, how you have helped parents understand how this may be a better way of teaching their children?
And that is so funny. One of my little girls earlier this school year, she goes, "You know, when I take my math home, my mom and dad just don't get it." They said, "This is not how we learned how to do math. We just learned the traditional logarithm, and that was it." But, so we have just continually, when they start in kindergarten, we educate the parents that we're not going to teach the traditional logarithm first. First, we are going to show your students, your child, what it means, what the number 10 looks like, or what the number 27 minus 13 looks like. And then eventually, we'll get to that logarithm. But if you ask my students, "What does it mean?", they will not just say, "Well, 7, you have to regroup." They don't go through that. Yes, they understand how to do that, but they understand what it means, that 7 ones, and it's not just a 2 for 27, it's 2 groups of 10s. And so, we really just have to continually educate parents. And one thing that a lot of our K-5 teachers do, we have classroom blogs, and we're continually putting on our classroom blogs, parent letters on how they can help at home with their child. But not only that, pictures of our classroom, of what they're doing in math, and short snippets of what different strategies we're learning. Yes, your kindergartner might be doing multiplication, but they don't have any idea that they're doing multiplication. They're just getting the background foundation in multiplication.
Thank you. Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mrs. Wilber. I owe you an apology. I don't remember if it's Cindy or Kathy?
It's Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Two questions. One is, I've got to say thanks again. I'm happy you're here. We do emphasize practice, though. Do we not?
Yes, we do emphasize practice, and we do emphasize like learning basic facts. But, you know, for example, my third graders, per Common Core State Standards, they are supposed to, multiplication, division, they're the facts, they're supposed to have been mastered in third grade. And so, we don't just give them the facts, we teach them strategies, how to solve. So, for example, my students, a couple of weeks ago, were doing multi-times mul of the fours in multiplication. And so, it's not just memorize them, but this is what it looks like. If you know your two facts, you're really taking that 4 times 4 and breaking it apart. We call it the break-apart method. And we get out the tiles, and we show them, "Well, look, this is 2 groups of 4, and this is 2 groups of 4. 2 groups of 4 is 8, another 2 groups of 4 is 8. Hey, that's the same thing as 4 times 4."
You know you're preaching to the choir here, right?
So...
Okay. Thank you for that. The other question is, you have third graders?
Mm-hmm.
I'm charged. I'm guessing you have some that are fairly talented and gifted?
Oh, yes, definitely so.
For those who can think abstractly and latch on to those algorithms and those recipes and formulae, those who can think abstractly, are we doing anything to go ahead and let them sort of run free and appreciate that they can latch on to those formulas?
We are. And I actually have one, I have some very talented third graders this year in my classroom, and I keep on pushing them on and letting them expand. And the great thing is, in a classroom, that when they are partnered up, or when we share our discussions, when they talk, the other ones are like, "Oh, I can use that exact same strategy." Maybe not on the same level, but yes, we definitely push them on and yet let them use their abstract thinking. But also double-check to really make sure they understand it conceptually, too, and that they just didn't learn. So, you're welcome.
Jim McNeese.
Congratulations to both of you. What a great job. I wish we could clone you and put you everywhere in the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ken Willard.
From a person who did passably at math but who didn't like it, I'm struck recently by the number of kids that I talk to who I ask what their favorite subject is in various grades, and it's almost always math. And I think, and I just heard a presentation recently from an elementary teacher at a very poor, low socioeconomic school, mostly minority kids, a lot of second-language kids, all this sort of thing. And she teaches math and had recently, in the last couple of years, gone to this method. And she just recounted amazing stories about how kids latched on to it and how they're excelling in math. And so, not as a teacher, but somebody who just has used math through my life, I'm impressed with this methodology. And I just, listening to you speak, I realized I could memorize quite well. And so, I memorized everything, and I did all right. But the conceptual piece is what I had to develop over a good bit of time, and that was behind my, and so that's where I began to struggle in math. So, I think this learning the logarithms and the formulas after the fact is really powerful, and I'm very pleased to see it. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Oh, I think we need to give Cindy our applause. Kathy.
We'll take a picture of you, too.
Okay. If you would come up, we'd have a little...
This is better than the president's right here.
That's right.
Dave, you mentioned a little bit ago about Melissa Hancock. Anybody know, remember her? She was a Milken Award winner one time over at Manhattan, very, very good math teacher. And she's now at the university, right?
Yes, she is.
Good person. Get your picture.
Next, on our agenda, we have Kalen Kendall, recommendations from the Professional Practices Commission.
Good morning, Board members. As the chairperson of the Professional Practices Commission, I'm here to present the recommendations of the Professional Practices Commission based on hearings that were conducted on January 27, 2014, and the action taken by the Professional Practices Commission on that day. You have them in your board packet starting on page 27. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
I did have one. I noticed that there were several pertaining to emergency sub-licenses, and that kind of surprised me because I thought those were pretty routine and didn't require as many qualifications.
Well, I don't believe that the Professional Practices Commission necessarily would see it quite that way. We believe that emergency subs would be held to the same ethical standards as any other teachers. Now, one of the things that, I think there are a couple of things related to the increase in number of emergency sub-applications. We believe that there is some evidence that some of the colleges are recommending that candidates seek an emergency substitute license, in some cases as a form of an initial license, kind of to test the waters if there is something in their past that they believe might cause problems in getting a license. And so, that would be, I believe, the increase.
Okay. Well, things have changed over the years since I was still involved with that, so I appreciate your comments. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. I have a question on one, and should I just say the number?
Sure, that would be fine.
Let me go back to, on number 16.
Okay.
Do you know how old that person was at the time?
Let me refer to the notes. Okay, number 16. I do not know that, from these notes, I don't know his exact age, but I do recall that this is not a young person. Okay, I see here that his birth date was in 1978.
Okay, thank you. I guess there are some that I do not agree with the recommendation. I'll be voting in opposition. So, my question is, should I just ask for those to be pulled? Are we going to vote on these individually?
No, we generally vote on them as a group.
Okay.
Because it's one recommendation.
Okay, that's what I thought, but there's...
Our attorney has input here.
Okay, all right, I'll tell you what I do. I'll just vote no on all of them then because of the ones that I have a concern about and do not want to. And usually, I want to support the recommendation, but there's some that I don't agree with the recommendation. So, I can just vote no on the whole packet.
Madam Chair, I think if we are not going to have unanimous votes on that, I think you should pull them so that they, each one would be considered separately so that you have a record of those votes.
That's what I thought, too.
Okay.
Just go down the list, maybe by number, and take a vote on.
Okay.
I realize that'll extend that because you've got 14 or so.
Right.
17, but...
Ken Willard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a number, excuse me, I had a number of questions on these recommendations today. And it'd take a bit of time to ask these questions, but I think I need to do that. Some of them are kind of minor, but some of them are more substantial. One that I thought was very interesting, the gentleman on page 45 of our agenda, he was charged in 2002 with, entered into a diversion on six counts of felony burglary and two counts of felony theft, and he was stealing from multiple parked cars. And then, down in the conclusions, it was stated somewhere that his, the occupation that he was going to be getting would not prevent that same kind of opportunity or temptation to him again. So, I don't know, is he walking, he's not walking through the parking lot or whatever. I thought that was a bit curious. Then, the applicant on page 56.
Well, can I address?
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, if your question is dealing with what was the commission's reasoning in coming to our conclusion?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to address those individually. In the case of, that would be number 7, which is on page 45. This person was very young. At the time of the initial, if not all of the crimes, he was under 18 years of age. During the hearing, the Professional Practices Commission came to the conclusion that this was a youthful indiscretion, and we feel that he has matured beyond that and does not present a potential for this behavior to continue.
Okay. Well, I accept that explanation. This probably is not one that I would have objected to, except the finding number eight, I guess in the conclusions, defines that the licenser requested by the applicant does not offer an opportunity to engage in conduct similar to the offense previously conducted. So, that just seemed to be a curiosity, that that was part of the rationale for approving him, is that he wouldn't have the opportunity to steal from parked cars again.
Well, I believe that the interpretation of this particular finding is that his being licensed as an educator would not present any enhanced opportunity for future criminal activity that would be similar to what has occurred in the past. And I guess I would differentiate this with someone who had been convicted of committing a crime against a child. Then, we would say that being licensed as an educator does, in fact, provide opportunity for future conduct of similar activities.
Okay. Well, if it had said enhanced opportunity, I would have probably not had the question. On page 56, this is a person who, let me down to it, was charged with sexual relations, improper sexual relations. And my question here, and this is neither here nor there, except that we're talking about the fingerprinting. I'm just wanting to know the timeline here. Was, how and when was KSDE notified about this person's issue? Was it before, at the time of the arrest, or was it after conviction?
I don't have personal knowledge of that, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Gordon.
You are referring to 13 PPC 49, Amber Schroeder, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. We were informed of that by the school district as well as media reports. We found about it in the newspaper while the case was pending. We've actually been sitting on this for a while, waiting for the case to be resolved.
So, we found out about it after there was an arrest?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction?
Right.
But, okay, but it's not after the conviction? Okay.
Right.
So, is the person allowed to remain in the classroom between the period of arrest and the conviction? and the conviction?
Assuming that the school, if the school district didn't take any action, yes, they would have remained in the classroom. But, in this particular place, in this particular circumstance, she was placed on administrative leave with pay. And I believe eventually, they decided not to renew her contract.
They decided not to remove her contract?
Right. Basically, the school got her out of the classroom almost immediately. Well before, I mean, she hasn't been in the classroom for some time.
You said they decided not to renew her contract?
To be honest, I don't recall exactly for this case what they did. I just know that she's not been teaching.
Okay, so, this line of question is going to the ultimate question, and as would the fingerprinting that we're proposing, would that have affected this in any way?
No.
No, in this case, because we got the notification, all right.
That's right.
Thank you. The same question, basically, for item, the one on page 59.
Okay. This one, actually, we found out about due to a report from Sedgwick County. They reported this person had been convicted, and they provided me with the journal entry of conviction.
Okay, Sedgwick is one of the counties that reports.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
We did not, we do not have that person's fingerprints, because they've been licensed since '91.
And this person, let's see, the conclusion here was, what? No, okay. On, the one on page 65.
Steven Zimmerman?
Battery of a student.
That's right.
Okay. Same, how did we find out about that? The timing and with the fingerprinting affected this any?
The prosecution, the prosecutor's office actually contacted me, wanted to know if, they had a proposed settlement agreement with the gentleman's attorney. They wanted to know if that would be sufficient for him to lose his teaching license, and how that would affect his license. I was not directly involved in the plea negotiations, other than I advised the prosecuting attorney, if he wants to ensure this person doesn't have a teaching license, this is how we go about doing it.
Okay, all right. This is a voluntary surrender, so, just wondering about that timing.
And for what it's worth, I would point out that there was no conviction in this case. The prosecutor dismissed it in exchange for him voluntarily surrendering his license.
I understand. On the one on page 68, this is one involving sexual relations, again.
Yes.
Personal license in 2006, was that person fingerprinted?
No.
Okay. So, how did we find, and when did we find out about this one?
This one, I should back up. I don't know if we have that person's fingerprints or not. I didn't find out about it through rat back. I actually found out about it, the school district recontacted me to find out why we hadn't done anything. I didn't have a good answer, other than we hadn't taken action. Once I got the journal entry of conviction, then we filed the complaint and proceeded.
So, we found out about this one?
The school district informed us at the time that they let the teacher go.
Okay.
In 2006.
All right.
Then, they kind of brought it back to our attention, to see why that person's license had not been revoked. She was not teaching after that, and I didn't have, I couldn't find any record and any evidence that she had been back in any classroom since the original school district had released her.
And you had not been notified of the problem? You had not been notified of the situation?
The department had been. This was actually prior to me being here, but the department had been notified appropriately by the school district.
And do you know why we, there had not been any action to remove the license?
I don't.
All right. Is that an internal procedure that needs to be fixed, or has it been fixed?
It's one that's been fixed.
Okay.
And it's one that if we had the fingerprints, I think we would have gotten that. I know that we never got a rat back, and I can tell you that I've spoken directly with the prosecuting office, because they did not send us any direct notification of this conviction. I believe that's been remedied.
Okay, thank you. I have just one more, Madam Chair. On page 74, conclusion number three was that this was a misunderstanding, that the violation was not intentional, but rather a misunderstanding of the law. Says applicant was not truthful or forthcoming in disclosing her convictions, and that she just misunderstood the law.
Yeah.
I don't understand that.
I'll address that. There was, well, first off, this conviction was in California, and there are differences in law between California and Kansas. The Commission was convinced, based on the testimony, that this applicant was not being intentionally deceptive, that she had a misunderstanding of the requirements for disclosure, and therefore, considered that to be a mitigating factor.
Is that application rather hard to understand?
As I recall, there have been some changes in the wording of particular items on application over the years. I'm not, I don't recall that that was necessarily a factor in this particular case. I think in this particular case, it was more of a difference in perception about what was required in terms of disclosure, based on Kansas law versus California law.
And Scott, do you have further comments on that issue?
If I can clarify. The difference in law, is the application confusing? Well, I have her application that she filled out, if you'd like to look at it. It asks the question, have you ever been convicted of a felony?
That's not very confusing.
That's what the application says.
Okay.
There is a journal entry that was filing after I, you know, sent the letter saying, we believe that you were convicted of this felony. If this is true, would you please send us the paperwork? This is, and again, I have this document available for you to review, and Kalen's here reading over my shoulder. In California, when you have something expunged, and they use the term differently than they do in Kansas, you are still required to disclose it. It even states, it is further ordered that the defendant is released from all penalties resulting from the conviction of the above-named offenses, except, and the first point is, this order does not relieve the defendant of the obligation to disclose the aforementioned conviction in response to any direct question contained in any questionnaire or application for public office, for licensure by any state or local agency, or for contracting with the California State Lottery. So, the court document that she was given at the time that California was finished with her case, says, if you ever apply for a license in any state, you are still required to disclose it.
Okay.
Okay. I believe the confusion on her behalf, the PPC found that because in Kansas, if you have something expunged, if this same offense had occurred in Kansas and was expunged in Kansas, she would not have to disclose it to us. And then, it's fine, that's an expungement. But, because the offense was, the conviction occurred in California, therefore, the expungement occurred in California, by law, she was still required to disclose it. So, I believe that was why the PPC, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that's why the PPC found, well, she wasn't honest, but it's not really her fault.
Was the question not answered, or was it answered no?
Have you ever been convicted of a felony? She marked no. This was an exhibit that came out in the PPC. If you'd like to see it, I can make that available for everybody. It's a public...
How did we find out about this?
Fingerprints.
The fingerprints, okay.
All right. But, I would reiterate that the Commission's findings were based on the fact that, had this conviction occurred in Kansas and had been expunged, then she would have been able to answer no to that question legitimately. So, as I said, there was enough evidence to convince the members of the Professional Practices Commission that she didn't necessarily fully understand, that she really should have answered yes to that particular question.
Thank you.
Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. And maybe this really isn't the proper time to ask, but I have a concern. When we let someone voluntarily surrender their license, then how does that affect them going to another state or another district and being able to be hired? That, I think, I personally think that we should revoke the licenses.
Well, in fact, we did. If you take number 13, who voluntarily surrendered, the Professional Practices Commission still took action on that to...
What number is that?
To make a recommendation, pardon me?
All right, so, we have a motion printed in our agenda. I think the simplest way to do this would be if anyone has numbers that they would like to remove from the vote, and then we will vote on those separately. So, before we have our motion, are there recommendations you would like to pull?
Carolyn Campbell would like to pull number 15 and number 17.
Okay, thank you. Are there any others? John Bacon?
Real quick, I just had a question on 15. How did we find out about the expungement? Because some of them, it's listed in there, others it isn't. And I didn't see, in our information anyway, that she ever had that expunged in California.
For the KBI and the FBI, if an offense has actually been expunged to the extent nobody could ever find out about it, it shouldn't be on their record. We found out about the expungement because she provided that document saying, no, no, I don't have to tell you about this, it's been expunged.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other recommendations that you would like to have pulled from the initial vote? All right, then, I would entertain a motion to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of the Professional Practices Commission and approve their recommendations in all cases except number 15 and 17. Moved by Kathy Bush, seconded by Jim McNeese, all in favor, raise your right hand. So, we have a nine-zero vote on that. Now, we will vote separately on item number 15. This was in reference to an emergency substitute license, and the PPC recommended issuing that license. Is there a motion to approve that recommendation? Moved by Janet Waugh, seconded by Jim McNeese. Is there discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Steve Roberts.
Because I have difficulty cross-referencing the information here, I apologize. What paper on, who are we talking about?
Number 15 is page 74.
74. I'll give folks a minute to look at that. Oh, that, we just discussed that one, didn't we?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to ask a question. I don't know who I'll ask this of, maybe Diane, I don't know, or Kalen, I don't know if this fails. Does it reverse their decision, or does it go back to them? Or, I mean, what, I don't know what happened. Well, maybe Scott's the one to answer, I'm just curious.
You either approve the license, or you don't. And it doesn't go back anywhere. If you make the decision not to approve the license, that person doesn't get a license. Yeah, there's, they can appeal that to District Court, but that's it.
This is one that I had on my list, I actually skipped when I was asking about it. My concern on this one is that, this offense occurred two years ago, and we don't think it's, pardon me?
I'm not on the same page there.
I'm sorry.
I don't even have that one.
I thought you said 71.
And I will just mention, it is okay to mention the name. These are public records. I know we're trying to do numbers, but they are public records, so if you want to refer to them by last name, it is acceptable.
74.
Let me see.
Okay. Okay. So...
So, we're discussing number 15.
Okay.
Burris.
I don't have a question on that one.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
If I may just make one more comment, you know, I would like to point out that in each of these cases, the Professional Practices Commission, you know, had a hearing. The department, in the form of Mr. Gordon, presented evidence, generally, the case to revoke or not issue a license. Then, the Professional Practices Commission heard evidence, primarily testimony from the individual, and there was a decision that was made after deliberation by the entire Professional Practices Commission. The vote of the Professional Practices Commission is reflected in the summary page, and so, in this case, the Professional Practices Commission voted 8-0 that this person should be issued a license.
Pardon me, ma'am, you want to clarify that the initial order actually says that incorrectly, but the summary page is correct?
Oh, thank you, yes. Yeah, if you look at the initial order on page 74, it does list the vote incorrectly, and that is on page, let me see.
75.
75, yeah. It listed as being 7-1, and when in fact, it was actually 8-0, and that's listed on the summary, page 27. That 8-0 is the correct vote of the Professional Practices Commission for their recommendation.
Did that answer your question?
No. I have a question. This case, it relate, is related to, or similar to, one we had a few years ago, and it was mentioned early in this report somewhere right versus State Board. What was our decision on that case?
That case actually predates my term on the Professional Practices Commission. I don't really feel comfortable commenting on that.
Scott can bring us up to date on that. That one's, it came before the board, also went to District Court, came back to the board, so Scott can...
And the final decision for Doug Wright was you denied his application for a license.
Okay. That was my recollection, I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Other questions? Did I have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Janet did move, was, oh, no.
No, Janet moved, I seconded.
And it was seconded by Jim McNeese. We've discussed it, all in favor of supporting the recommendation of the PPC. Raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, five in favor, all opposed. One, two, three, four. So, the motion fails for lack of... So, the motion fails for lack of five. We need six. It failed, because the motion was to approve it. So, the vote was 5-4. All right, then, we'll look at 17. Do I hear a motion to approve the recommendation of the PPC?
That is on page 71.
71?
Yes. And I do hear some, I've heard someone comment that this was rather recent. It was only a couple of years ago. This individual was in college, a young person, and he was arrested and went into a diversion agreement for possession of marijuana. The Professional Practices Commission believes that this recommendation is in line with what has been done in the past, in terms of the person has completed that diversion program. And once again, also the fact that it was, you know, a youthful indiscretion. And I would say that there's also sentiment on the Professional Practices Commission that this particular crime is not necessarily at the same level as certain other crimes, given the fact that the President of the United States admits to having used marijuana as a young person, and that it, that the prevalence of former marijuana users is high among the general population.
He did disclose on his application, though, did he not?
Are you talking about number 17, blue felony?
I believe I am.
And then, my other question, since I'm not familiar with Topeka personnel, it says he submitted a letter of support from a certain person. Is that person involved in the school system? Or the letter of support, what?
Mr. Gordon has that right now.
Which letter is he referring to?
I didn't know if that was a personal friend, or?
He had a letter of support from principal of Topeka West High School.
Okay, all right. That's what I was trying to find out. Okay. Thank you. Other questions before we entertain a motion? John Bacon.
The, well, thank you. I mean, the only, I'm inclined to support this, but the only problem that I have is the message that we send, that, "Don't worry. If you do it in college, it's okay, and you'll get your license." I mean, that, I don't want that to be a perception out there, that we don't pay attention to these things. So, that's my hesitancy, especially because it's only happened two years ago. So, I don't know what anybody else thinks about that.
I understand. That is a dilemma.
There are consequences to our actions and what we do, even in college.
Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. Since I represented Topeka West High School when I was on the local board, and I am a resident of Topeka, and when you said, "This is the principal," she's only been there about a couple of years, and she's, I think, retiring now. My, so, if it was someone out there that I knew, then that would have maybe, I would think more, I don't know of Jeanne Carton to know how she knows this gentleman. So, by saying that she's a prince, the principal now, that doesn't encourage me to want to support her letter that I have not seen and don't need to see it.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the findings, recommendations? Moved by Jim McNeese, seconded by Kathy Bush. I think we've had discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. I see five hands. All opposed, raise your hand. So, the motion fails with a 5 to 4 vote. So, the...
Have we recorded the four on either? I think we need to do that.
No, I'm sorry. I forget that.
And how about on the other one? Steve and Carolyn Dina. Can we just repeat those again? Steve, Ken, Carolyn, Dina.
On the first one? I'm sorry that I didn't think to name them. Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Now, we are going to hear from our policy, Board Policy Committee, and Janet Waugh is the chairperson.
Okay, you have copies of the recommended changes. We have spent a considerable amount of time meeting over the past year and several months. And anyway, we reported back to you on several meetings. So, I guess, are there any more ques, any questions?
John Bacon. John Bacon.
On page 108, number five was eliminated and changed. I don't know if, but the part that was eliminated, it says, "Electronic devices may be used to record the proceedings." Are we not allowing electronic devices to record proceedings anymore? Was that moved to someplace else, or why did we delete that language? Page 108.
I think the discussion was, is that we are, we are recording them. I mean, you know, they're being archived, in fact. So, everything is being recorded and...
So, why would we eliminate that?
We didn't think it was necessary, I guess. I think, Carolyn, Kathy, is that what you remember? We didn't feel the necessity for it?
I didn't know if we weren't allowing it any longer, or why would we do that? Number five. It looks like it was replaced, but the previous number five was, it looks like it was deleted.
I think it was, this particular policy just references open forum. It doesn't reference the overall board meetings, and the overall board meetings are all recorded. So, I think that's why, I think that's why we decided to delete it.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure we weren't not allowing that, because it doesn't say who's going to record, or, because it could be someone that walks in and wants to record the open forum or whatever. I just wanted to make sure we weren't making that illegal or something.
I would think unless we state that we cannot record, they could record.
Yeah, if it hadn't been there and been eliminated, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion, because we just normally record and...
Well, I was just curious as to why it was struck out.
If you would want to move that we put it back in, you can.
Well, I'm fine with it being out. I just want to make sure we're not changing our policy as far as electronic devices are recorded.
Well, that is, it does make you wonder.
Okay.
Well, I think Kathy's right, though, because of the citizens' open forum. That's, this speaks directly to the citizens' open forum.
Yeah, and all of the meetings.
And so, we're not talking about the entire meeting, because that would have gone back to where we listed the agenda and everything. And it's not mentioned in that section.
Just in the wrong place, basically.
Well, it's in the wrong place, or, you know, I think we're not stating that they may not be used.
All right, I'm fine with that. My second question was on page 110, number four. It states that 13 copies shall be provided. Does that mean that if there's only one, if they walk in with one copy of written testimony, it's not going to be part of the record?
Can I?
Yeah, Carolyn. Carolyn.
Well, my thought is on that, that if, we'll accept what they receive, but if someone's going to bring, because a lot of folks, they always have enough copies. It was just giving them the number that would be, would cover the board and our staff. But we're not, we're going to request...
Well, why don't we make it 13 copies is recommended?
And it also says, "If written testimony is submitted." Because a lot of people don't submit written, they just come and speak, and they don't submit written testimony.
But there are cases where we'd have someone that wanted to submit written testimony, and they have one.
Okay.
That doesn't mean we're going to ignore it, in my view.
I think John has a good point. You want to, would you, instead of saying shall?
How about should be?
No, shall, recommend.
Change the word shall, because it sounds like we're not going to accept written testimony if you don't give us 13 copies.
Say, 13 copies is recommended.
Should too hard, Mark?
Should is just permissive.
Okay.
So, we will, you're in agreement that we can change shall to should?
Are you okay, Kathy?
Okay. Are there other questions or comments?
I want to thank the committee, Janet Waugh as chair, Carolyn Campbell, and Kathy Bush. I know that they worked on revising this policy for many hours, and it is kind of a tedious job. I think you've done an excellent job of catching all the little things that we haven't noticed over time that needed to be addressed. So, thanks for giving up your lunch hour, I don't know how many times, to do this. And thanks to Mark as well. I think he assisted you and sat in with you every time, so. And Peggy. See, I wasn't there. I didn't remember. And Peggy also helped with the good note-taking, so. That being the case, I would ask for a motion that we approve the policy as revised by our committee. Moved by Ken Wellard, seconded by Steve Roberts. All in favor, raise your, oh, comments?
I believe there was an addition we wanted to put into the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, Carolyn, I believe has it. So, there's another part of the motion we would like, besides approving it, we'd like something else.
Okay. We are now making a motion that it is moved that the State Board of Education adopts the recommendations of the Board Policy Committee as presented, and instructs the committee to post the revised edition on the board page of the KSDE website for accessibility.
Okay. And Ken, are you going to...
Do we need to formally amend, make the, formally make that wording change that we did before?
Adding it to the website?
No. Changing the shall to should.
Oh. Yeah, as...
They didn't, she didn't say as amended, so. Okay.
Okay.
Board Solid Policy Committee as amended.
Okay. There's the total motion. And Ken had agreed to make the motion. So, you move as read by Carolyn.
That's right.
Steve seconded the motion. Good. Now, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. We have a unanimous vote. Yeah, right. Where are the balloons? Nine through to zero on that one. Next, we have a recommendation from the QPA Advisory Council. Scott Myers.
Denise is handing out the copy of the PowerPoint. It's my pleasure to be before you again, talk with you a little bit about accreditation. If you recall, last month, we were here together unpacking a little bit, and we're going to do a workshop in May. But it's necessary to address the concept of accreditation for this year as it is, or next year, rather, as it is an annual event. This meeting a year ago, the Board took the action to credit everyone this year. And so, I'm bringing to you, and Brad will talk a little bit first, the recommendation, official recommendation from the QPA Advisory Council, who had met back in December. And so, we have, bringing to you the information for formal action.
First of all, there are a couple of components, as Scott said, since currently under QPA, it's an annual event. Last year, the Board recommended that we move away in the accreditation from AYP and start using the AMOs, and it was a recommendation of the Council to continue that another year, continue look at the four AMOs instead of AYP targets. And then, their recommendation was then for the 1415 school year. So, next year, all schools just remain accredited again as we transition through this. You have your handouts, which we've talked a little bit earlier, some of the reasons. Again, they wanted to make it clear to the Board that we still want to be held accountable, but as we transition, it's very difficult to try to make accountability determinations when we're piloting a new test, piloting a new test engine. Everybody's exposed to new items, new item types, questions. There won't be cut scores on this new test until the fall, because the kids have to take it first. So, there's several reasons. And also knowing that several of the items that are piloted will be thrown out after it's determined they may not have measured what we wanted. So, that was the reasons for their recommendation, and there are a couple of possible motions. Right. The first, the first, actually, Scott was going to do this slide. So, first motion is we move to use the annual measurable objectives again instead of AYP, and then that the State Board would move that all schools during 1415 would be accredited.
Okay. Would someone like to move the first motion? My mind just went blank. Deana. Deana Horst moves that we continue the use of measurable objectives instead of AYP. Is there a second? Seconded by Ken Wellard. Is there discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. I see eight hands, all opposed. Steve Roberts is opposed, so there are eight favorable votes, one in opposition. Thank you. And the next one moves that all schools remain accredited in 1415. Moved by Jim McNeese, seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Is there discussion? Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. I saw nine hands there. Am I correct? 9-0. Thank you very much. And I believe it is time for lunch, so we will adjourn for lunch.